To the land of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Mrs. DeWoo? Yes. Um, Mr. ...
Okay. Yes.
Mrs. DeWoo?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Mrs. Devlin?
Yes.
Mrs. Jansen?
Yes.
Mr. Dos?
Yes.
Mr. Reel?
Yes.
Okay, we mustn't approve the agenda.
Okay.
Kalon Shen Grayson.
Oh.
All in favor? Okay, now we will do the results of the election. Election results for Scottling County. Knox County is zero. The election for Lewis County results are zero. For Macon County is zero. And then the Knox County, this is to the Knox County R1 school. This is to certify that the enclosed is true, correct, and complete ascert of all the votes cast in the 2025 municipal election as shown by the returns made to my office by the judges of the 2025 municipal election and as verified by the verification board as provided in section 115.2507 RSM. The member of Board of Education, three-year term, vote for two, Alan Peever-Pedler, 300 votes and 41 absentee votes equals 341 votes. Shelley View, 457 regular votes and 51 absentee votes, a total of 508 votes. Martha Strange, 377 regular votes and 46 absentee votes equals 423 votes. Right hands, zero vote, regular votes and zero absentee votes. Testimony where I am here unto set my hand and fix the seal of the county commission at my office in Indiana, Missouri this 11th day of April 2025 sincerely Marlene Spohr. Entertain a motion for approval of those results.
So.
Second. Entertain a motion for approval to the dissolution of the board to temporarily appoint Superintendent Alex Ben Delph as a temporary chairman.
So moved.
On paper? You want that?
Ready?
We're gonna get out of this.
Say this.
I am with you.
Yep, say it together.
I, Shelley View, solemnly swear that I am at least 24 years of age, that I am a citizen of the United States and a resident taxpayer of the Knox County R1 School District in Knox County in the state of Missouri, and that I will support the constitutions of the United States and of the state of Missouri, and I will abide by and uphold the Knox County R1 School District Board Member Code of Ethics and will faithfully demean myself in office.
Opening nominations for board president. Nominations are closed. That was. Those in favor? Here's seven, six, seven.
Six.
Oh.
I call for nominations of vice presidents. Make the nomination. Nomination's full. So I guess really we supposed to nominate and then do a motion to approve.
I nominate Kim or vice director.
So Andrew made the nomination and Shelley's?
I nominated her.
And now we're making the motion.
Yeah. So now I entertain a motion for treasurer.
We have to move.
On favor? Entertain a motion for treasurer.
I nominate Carisha. Yeah.
It doesn't matter.
Treasurer?
I'm gonna nominate you for secretary.
I nominate Jason Dos for treasurer.
So we have the nomination.
Okay, now I entertain a motion to nominate Jason Dos as treasurer. Okay, on paper? Okay, entertain a motion for secretary.
All in favor?
No, we are.
Someone to nominate.
I'm nomination for secretary.
I nominate Carisha.
Okay, now I need a motion to nominate for.
So moved.
Thank you. Okay, all in favor? Motion carries. Oh, who? Who's that? Challenge now. So entertain a motion to adjourn the reorganization. Second.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Mrs. Devlin? Mrs. Jansen?
Yes.
Mr. Dos?
Yes.
Dr. Strange?
Yes.
Mr. Reel?
Yes.
Mrs. DeWoo?
Yes.
Going to call the meeting to order for the regular meeting and entertain a motion for approval of the agenda. Okay, the general?
Yep.
Agenda person. Okay, all in favor? Okay, approval of the minutes. The regular session held March 18th, 2025 at 6:00 PM in Boardroom Number 500 and entertain a motion for approval of those minutes.
So moved.
Second. On favor? Close motion carries. Executive session held March 18th, 2025 at 7:03 PM in Boardroom Number 500 and entertain a motion for approval of those minutes. All in favor? Authorization for payment of bills. Questions? Not entertain a motion for approval for the authorization of payment of bills.
So moved. Okay.
All in favor? Close motion carries. Citizens' communication. Have lost it again. Expendence. Your kind and thoughtful expression of sympathy is deeply appreciated and gratefully acknowledged. Knox County School Board of Education and staff, thank you for beautiful lanterns and the support at this difficult time, the family of Donna Cardwell. There's no others, we'll move on to administrative report elementary.
Um, we had a great turnout with the family activity night. We had 66 of the 88 kids who signed up chem, and the only reason that we lost some of them was because we had ballgames that night that when we had originally planned the day, we weren't aware of some ballgames that were going on. Otherwise, a lot of those who were gone were our pretty dedicated ones who come to a lot of things. We got a lot of great feedback, families really enjoyed it. They said that they really enjoyed being able to learn the activities with their child so that they could do some of those things at home. They liked taking home the materials that we gave to them as well so that they can incorporate some of that learning at home. We also had prizes that were donated by PTO, and so I think that was a big draw. PTO donated about $605 to $600 worth of prizes for us, and the kids got to put their raffle tickets in there and then we drew them out randomly to see who won prizes. So that was another big drawing point for them. But we had good attendance, great feedback, things that we can do to, you know, make it a little better next time, but all in all, things went very, very well. Elementary math team, we've got kids moving on to state, so Carmen and Rhett are both moving on, so they're excited, you know, another day of math on Saturday. But at the bottom of the page, I included what Carmen and Rhett both, how they both ranked. So overall Carmen was the fourth overall in fourth grade, and so you have to be the top 10 out of your area. And then Rhett was ninth overall in fifth grade. They also do a sweepstakes, which is your team and kind of how you work all together, and so they placed fourth overall in that. So all of those things are very exciting. Things that we still have coming up, math testing will be here before you know it. So today we did some of our practice, or sorry, prep with teachers so that they know what to expect. Most of them have given it, so they already know, you know, the ins and outs of it, but we did go through that. They have been doing the testlets, and I think we're gonna see some really good things from that. Obviously, this is the first time that we've done that, but it's given our kids some more exposure to the tools, like in the actual setting. And then I use that data and I share that with teachers so that they can go back and say, okay, we didn't do very good on that unit in geometry, but we hadn't taught geometry, so now I know what my kids need to continue to work on, or we just did fractions and we aced fractions. So it's been really informative, they have enjoyed that. The rest of the things that are on there are really just calendar items for you so that you know what's coming up. We have something, seems like every single week, if not two or three times a week, going on in the elementary through the rest of the school year. So some big things that we have, our kindergarten graduation, preschool signing, Missouri History Night, Farm Bureau Safety Day, things that are some collaboration pieces with other parts of the district. So we are very excited to keep on moving. Any questions?
At the high school, we have kids leaving every day, it seems like. So kids are being dismissed early. FFA is winding up, so we had a lot of students missing for practice contests. We have track kids, baseball. Middle school has 48 kids off of track. So when they leave, it pretty much closes down the middle school, so that's good to see, though. I mean, we're, kids are doing great. Some major things going on. So tomorrow's mid-quarter, fourth quarter midterm, hopefully those kids will get their grades up, we've been on them. I would like to invite everybody to prom, it's April 26th, so next Saturday after we're gonna have prom and kids will be showing their stuff in the gym, and hopefully we have a great turnout for that, looking forward to that. April 30th, I know they'll probably touch on it a little more, we're having Art and Innovation Night, it's a showcase night, and we would love to have you guys. I know there's been a lot of things on Facebook here recently really pushing that, so we found our showcase days, you know, not everybody can get off work, so if we do one of an evening, we can bring in lots of different individuals hopefully for that. One real neat thing I wanna touch on, Don Newellens doing an, like a prom closet, there's bringing in old dresses, suits, tuxes, dress shoes for those kids who may not have the financials to attend prom. So that's really neat, we're looking forward to that. There's already been a lot of some dress shoes showing up, dress shirts and different things like that, so that's really neat, and I know kids are gonna take advantage of that, it's a good thing. Students of the Month, we have two students receiving their student, their state degrees in the next month. We had two teams advance, but only one's going to qual, are gonna go participate, and the other one's holding out, hoping they can do a little better next year. So they advanced, but they're holding, they wanna, they wanna do better, so good for them. Other things on FBLA Middle School State Leadership, we sent individuals down there, they came home with medals. High School Scholar Bowl finished second in districts to Skyler County, which I believe they've beaten the last three, I think it's been one and two the last three years, so good for them. We'll take it, I know they were disappointed, John Clark is gonna beat them before he graduates. Middle school, very successful season for them, they had 19 students who participated with that as well. Band and choir, if you can see, I put the, our kids are doing, the band and choir kids are cleaning house when they go to contests, it seems like, so we're very proud of them and what they're accomplishing there. This has not been journalism in your book, they went to Mizzou J Day, I'm not sure that these have been posted yet, but our kids, again, did very well down there, won several awards, so we're very, very happy with how that program's going and the experience those kids are gaining. 14 student athletes for baseball, track has 28 total, middle school 48, the boys won the La Plata Invitational, and the girls on the move, the track kids was running buddies, it was nice to see them get involved, and I know the kids enjoyed that, seeing them run around with them, so. Good things happening at the high school, EOC, math testing's coming up, we're extremely busy, but we're gonna make it, I promise, so lots of good things, so thank you.
Just a couple of things, we are winding down our special education referrals and testing, we will end with 33 referrals for the year. And I think we have now, from this report, three that are still, we're finishing up their testing. Planning our Title I meeting, that will take place before mid-June, just so we can do our planning for our application. Parents as teachers had a very successful group connection in collaboration with FFA, they had 21 families and 37 students come out and plant flowers and flowerpots that they planted, and everyone had a great time. One thing I wanted to note on the grants, we talked about the NRA grant previously, I see Mrs. Dobrinsky wrinkling her nose. So when we looked deeper into that, they only funded part of the grant, they funded the new goggles, but not the ammunition and clothes, so that was disappointing, but we'll keep trying, and hopefully that will come through, so that's all I have.
All right, lots of construction that we've been doing, construction for about three years now, but we're starting our next set of projects, if you remember, it's weatherization, lighting, some ceiling tiles, windows and windows sill patching, and then a solar panel or the solar project will be the last one. They're gonna start tomorrow, we'll start at 4:00 PM and work second shift, 4:00 PM to midnight, that'll be it after the end of the school day, and then the 17th, 18th, and 21st, they'll work normal school hours, just because we won't be here, we'll be on break, so they'll work during the day, weatherizing, weatherization, and then they'll start some of the lighting project, and then starting on April 22nd through May 9th, they're working second shift, so 4:00 PM to midnight until they can complete those two projects, that'll be our spring work. We have made several notes of events that are going on in the evening that they need to avoid, so like on April 30th, we'll have the Innovation Night, I know there's another concert coming up, there's a couple of different things that are going on that we'll have to avoid, and they said they'll be able to avoid those nights or be in a different part of the building regardless. So that is starting up, it's exciting, we've been talking about it for a while, so it's finally here. Again, those, that set of projects will finish on May 9th, then we'll have our summer construction projects, and that'll be the ceiling, windows, window sill patching, and the solar panel or the solar project, that'll start on May 26th and that'll run through July 2nd, so it should be pretty brief in how long it'll take. The only thing that working out currently is summer school's going on during that time, and elementary work, windows are being replaced, so we're putting a plan together to ensure that we don't get in the way of that, so just being strategic if we need to switch rooms or whatever it might be, but I know they're, they're working with us, it's working with Navitas, if you remember, and they've done a good job communicating with us and trying to make sure that they're not invincible in what we're doing on a day-to-day, with day-to-day operations, so it's going well. But that is kind of the process that we have with Navitas and all those projects that we'll have during the spring and the summer. What we're doing currently, so in the playground, as I said, you pictured it last week, the end of the week, progress, so that'd be the retaining wall in the sidewalks, ADA compliance, to be able to get down to the bottom part of the playground, that is nearing completion, it looks good. And PTO today donated $1,000 to help with paying for that, so that was outstanding, we appreciate that support. On the other end, we are working on the batting cages sale, so there's six four-feet-wide, five-foot-deep holes that poles are currently sitting in, there's no concrete in them yet, but that'll be poured hopefully tomorrow, and then it'll cure, and then we'll be able to hang up the new batting cage, and then be ready to use it, so that'd be great as well, something we've been talking about for a while. And booster club, I think, I don't know the exact amount, they donated $28,000 total, that was for the batting cage, that was for football uniforms, and I think there's one other thing that kind of wrapped up into one big check, so we appreciate that as well, so it made a huge contribution to that project, so.
Do we have the batting cage next?
We have everything ready to go, yep. One side is ready, the other side's been backordered, but currently, I mean, we'll get that one up, and I think that'll be good for right now. That's all for me, from Food Service Reports, Kisha, I talked to her, she is currently working on summer school, so we've been putting together our compliance plan along with Mrs. Benoid to ensure that we're meeting all those expectations. She busy as ever with all the different things that she's doing, she organized food truck yesterday, I think it ended up being an hour away because it was so popular, which is great, but I know everyone really likes that change of pace, and it doesn't necessarily help her numbers, but she knows the staff really appreciates it, so we appreciate it, do look it up, those little things that kind of make you look forward to coming to work. That's all I have for Food Service.
Okay, we went to unfinished business, there are no items, so new business strategic planning goals and objectives report, agriculture.
You guys are gonna have to go first.
We'll be putting in the board on January.
All right. So I thought I would start out with kind of the awards, our FFA chapter has started off with this busy spring. As Mr. Carper mentioned, we do have two students receiving their state degree, that'll be next Friday at state convention, that is Maddie Ward and Jase Holman. Only the top 10% of FFA members in Missouri receive that, so they will tell you it's not a big deal, but it is a big deal, and they worked really hard their four years to get that. Next fall, we have four alumni, Colin Hayes, Lenny James, Savannah Shrag, and Kimberlyn Yocum, will receive their American degree at National Convention in Indianapolis. Junior Lila James, she also received for her proficiency, she got second place in equine production entrepreneurship for raising her horses for her SAD. We had two teams, two CDE teams this year that advanced to state. Livestock, which was Lila James, Esther Hanses, Callie Parrish, and Haley Luzenauer, they placed 10th, but decided to not go this year since two of the members are just freshmen. They assured me that they are going to judge livestock every day this summer so that they go on next year and can place well at state. And then farm management, John Clark, Blake Campbell, and Nathan Penn, they received eight, and they will be competing Friday at 8:30 AM at state convention in Columbia, and they are hoping for top 20 in the state, so lofty goal, but I think they can accomplish that. Kelly, when did we do that PD, this fall, right? It was like December?
Yeah.
So we are able, with Ms. Senter, we are able to have a half-day PD where we can kind of get together and kind of just brainstorm different ideas with other teachers in the building. Kelly and I had a half-day PD together, and we got to talking about showcase days, and it just seemed like at showcase days, we were either not showcasing what we wanted to really about our programs, or there was just always some conflict of some kind. So our Arts and Innovation Night, which I think we went back and forth on the name 10 times on what we wanted to call it, and we decided we were gonna try to do a showcase night in the evening that would showcase everybody in the entire school. So it started kind of with just CTE, so us who are here, and then it just kind of kept snowballing into, we wanted to include everybody in the entire school who was willing to show what their students were doing. So we have been pushing this night, I mean, we've been trying to get it out to everyone what's going on. ENN made this video for us to kind of showcase everyone who would be participating, so I wanna show you guys that real quick.
Knox County R1 will host an arts and innovation showcase on April 30th from 5:00 to 7:00 PM. Co-witness firsthand the daily learning happening in our classrooms and celebrate the creative talents of our students.
Enjoy artwork and innovative projects that highlight their hard work and passion. This is a great opportunity to support and inspire our students while experiencing the impact of art in education.
Don't miss out on this exciting event.
We look forward to seeing you there.
So I will have students, my freshmen have been completing woodworking projects, they will be working on those, sophomores have been doing welding, so they will be out there, and then I will have students out in the greenhouse showing what we've been doing, and we will also have the greenhouse open for sales. So I think we've kind of gotten everybody in some way involved in this project, so we're hoping to see a lot of community faces, we're hoping that other school districts who are interested in what we are doing, businesses, we're really hoping that this can be community-wide so that everyone can truly see all the awesome things our school is doing. Kelly, do you wanna add anything? Um, Kelly, do you want to add anything else right now or?
Um.
When do you go?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Sorry, Echo just told me we need to send something to the paper, so I was looking for this ad that we can send to her. Uh, yeah, we would just love to see you there.
Yes. Um, so this fall, I told you guys kind of about the chicken coop, um, that myself and Mr. Green are, um, collaborating on. So this is the latest progress that we have. Um, this was poured a couple of weeks ago. We got the concrete pad and, um, what this will be, so this will actually be the coop right here. And then we are gonna have like a, um, kind of a storage area for feed, bedding, um, everything else that we would need. Um, and then we are gonna fence in kind of this whole entire area, which I've been told that this is the football playing area. So I'm hoping that they will not be too upset about losing that area. Um, so we're hoping to fence all of that in, um, and kind of make that just kind of the chicken run area. Um, I know in my, myself, talking with Mrs. Barnhill and talking with Mr. Green, um, you know, my students are gonna learn a lot from taking care of chickens. However, I really want to involve, um, the elementary and any other group that would like to join. Um, because I think the elementary students, for them being able to feed and water and collect the eggs, um, I think that will mean so much, you know, a lot to them to be able to take care of what they get to see running around in the playground. Um, so I'm really hoping that that can be a good collaborative piece, uh, next fall, when hopefully we have some chickens running around. And Kisha is very excited to have eggs for her kitchen and Mrs. Hutchins as well.
Only if you're gonna come dress them.
Um, the next project, uh, my greenhouse class took on, um, years and years ago. We, um, were responsible for doing, um, the original landscaping that we have out in front of the building right now. And with the new addition we have here, Mr. Carper asked, uh, my greenhouse class if they would design some new landscaping, um, for the new construction. Um, so Mr. Carper was our client. Um, we had him come in for a very formal interview of what he wanted. He didn't really tell us too much, he said the sky's the limit. So the kids went, the sky's the limit. Um, and they, we use this app, um, called, just called Landscape Design. Um, and they are able to put in, um, they can put in any plants they want around the areas. Um, they can put in picnic tables, pretty much anything that you would be able to put in a landscape, you can do on this app. Um, so I had four different groups, um, and they kind of, they looked up different hardscapes. So like concrete, they looked up the plants. I think some of them had hummingbird feeders. Um, they had to look up and price everything that they wanted to include in this landscape. Um, because we all know as a client, what are you really worried about is what, what it's going to cost. Um, so they had to include all of that in their designs. Um, so one group, um, the flagpole, we talked about the flagpole. I always think it's so bare. Um, so a lot of them focused on, um, putting different things around the flagpole. Um, this group here, uh, put a concrete planter, which I thought would look really cool here on both sides of, um, kind of this sidewalk here that's kind of bare. Um, and then they went with kind of a reddish plant, um, to do that as well. Um, this next group. Um, so this group kind of started out, um, here, kind of where the offices are recessed. It's kind of just a bare area. Um, they wanted to put some shrubbery in here. And then we had a lot of discussion about if we could actually make this happen. Um, but they wanted to put some kind of lighting, um, there on both sides of the pillars to kind of give it a glow. Um, and then you guys know kind of the current, um, shrubs that are there. They wanted to take those out and redo those, um, and kind of put in some new ones. And then they wanted to put, um, kind of the concrete, oh, they're about that high, like little blocks. Um, they wanted to line that area, um, with those concrete blocks. And we were kind of limited, um, like we couldn't really get up on a ladder and take the picture of the school how we needed to. So we kind of had to deal with, what would that look like if we were trying to landscape, um, that area? And then I had one student, she wanted to make you all a handout, so I'll let you guys pass these around. Um, Jayden Hicks, um, she made a pamphlet for you all to look at, um, for her design so that you could see it. So I'll let you guys look at that. Um, but we had a great time, um, doing these. Um, there was a lot of heated discussion, um, about what would look best and what they wanted to do. We had Mr. Carper, after they did their original design, Mr. Carper came back in to give us some feedback. Um, and I don't think it gets any more real world than that. You know, the students, if they were to go into a landscaping business, they would have to do a client interview. They would have to figure out prices for everything for their design. Um, so they really enjoyed being able to do this for their school. Okay, and then lastly, um, the greenhouse. Um, so this was our greenhouse last week. Um, in my opinion, I don't think it has looked any better than it does right now. Um, the blooms are just so vibrant and beautiful right now. Um, so I'm hoping they will stay that way all through May so that for our sales, um, they will keep looking good. Which our opening day is tomorrow, we will be open till six. So if you're needing any flowers, come out and see us, we'll be there. Um, so we've kind of already hit on the elementary groups that we've collaborated with. Um, we did, um, parents as teachers, we planted flowers. Um, preschool and first grade have both came out and, um, planted flowers. Preschool started seeds so that they can track, uh, flower growth, um, for their diary, so they can see how a seed grows into a flower. Um, we are continuing, um, we are going to go uptown and set on, um, the square, um, so that we can continue selling there. Um, I still always hear my number one factor is a lot of people still tell me that they don't even know we have flowers out here. So if I can bring it to them, um, so that they can, you know, support us, then we'll do that with our mums this fall. We had a great turnout, um, of people stopping, so I'm hoping this spring will have a good turnout as well. Um, we also, um, did a pre-sale for, um, flower planters. We, um, the extension office is buying some, um, for like their front door. Um, and then we are going to build them and, um, plant them and then we will deliver them, hopefully the second week in May. Um, the flex program this year, so I have two students, um, Lila James and Maddie Ward. They are wonderful. Um, I do not think the greenhouse would be where it is without them. Um, I have them three hours a day and they aren't always busy. Um, Maddie constantly comes in and tells me that our flower has got mites. And she's like, we gotta get them controlled right now. And I'm like, well, Maddie, what do we need? I'm gonna go to farm and home and I'll be right back. And they're taken care of. So, um, they are great at just keeping everything in order, watering when we need to, um, and just everything else that sometimes I would have to push off because I just didn't have time, um, and they are doing a great job with helping me there. Um, I talked to you guys a little bit about in the fall, um, our hydroponics tower. So we are, um, supplying lettuce and hopefully vegetables to the cafeteria. Um, we have gotten romaine lettuce, um, since about December, we have been supplying the cafeteria. However, I don't think it's enough. Um, so I would like to expand the hydroponics. Um, I know Mrs. Henry down in the elementary, they have a hydroponics system. Um, so I would like to collaborate with her and see if her elementary students would like to, um, help us grow lettuce for the cafeteria. Cause our little tower out there just isn't producing enough for what Kisha needs in the kitchen. Um, and then we kind of had a, um, greenhouse malfunction, I'll say, when we lost heat, um, this past fall and it killed all of our vegetable plants. So I'm crossing my fingers, um, that this summer and fall, we can get those vegetables started. And, um, the cafeteria can have vegetables for the entire school year. So that's our goal, um, for next year is to, to see that through and get the cafeteria those. Is there any questions?
I noticed the planters on the video today for, that the art class made, how many of those are available?
Um, yes, so Mrs. Lucas in the art class, she had her arts and crafts. They sculpted out of clay these cutest little planters. Um, and we are going to plant them and sell them. Um, and they did like a cow and a chicken and a turtle, like they turned out beautiful. Um, and I think there's around twelve to fifteen of those that we'll be planting, um, and selling. So, yeah, they're, they're really cool, turned out really nice, so.
Is there anything that, that we could do for you, like the sky's the limit? Is there any resources, any, anything that we could do to help, to help you out?
I, I think the school supports, uh, you know, supports the ag department, great. So, uh, the sky's the limit, so, yeah, I, I feel like we're really supported out there, so.
I also want to make a comment, last night, I got to be one of the interviewers for the F F A officer position. And I was so impressed with all of the kids. There's ten kids that, uh, Ben Delaney and I interviewed and they were all very passionate about F F A. And they, they all did a good job, but it's really hard to, to select a different, uh, position. Just kudos. Thank you.
Great job.
Alright, thank you.
Great job.
Oh, God, it's me.
Okay, oh, can I backtrack? I'm sorry. Really quickly, I want to pass out, um, for each board member, I have an invitation to our banquet in May. So this is just our awards banquet, we'll have a meal, um, the kids all run it and they do a great job. Um, so I just wanted to, while I'm seeing you guys, I just wanted to give you a real quick, um, invitation.
Thank you.
Sorry, Randy.
It's okay.
Did you make a selection on what landing area option you're gonna go with there?
I'm, uh, I really like those picnic tables in there, the idea in the middle, that was one of my favorites. I wanna pick and choose from a couple of different. I tell you.
Oh, yes, they were all about bigger, bigger.
You know the, Skyler County has that ram outside?
There's a guy, there's a guy in Brashear to hook us up.
Really? Did you hear that?
Yeah.
Yes.
Creighton was looking, he has spent a lot of time looking for a humanist eagle.
Brandon Crandall in Brashear, he's a sculptor, it's way dust.
Really? What was his first name?
Brandon.
Brandon?
Yeah. Yes, he is fantastically talented. Yes. How big is the eagle? We gotta help him use kind of the ram.
I do not have a fancy presentation like that, because I just got back to town about two hours ago from state F B L A. So my apologies, you just get to listen to me talk. So this year, Desi decided that, or didn't decide, made a mandate that computer science has to be on the course calendar for, or the course scheduled for the high school. So this year we have computer science back. Normally it was in a rotation against middle school business. So I have seven boys who are having the time of their life right now because they have done things such as coding in Python and watch, making little actions happen on a computer, to playing with little robots, which leads to what they are doing for the arts and innovation night. We will have the real-life Rocket League, ties into esports. The flea will have a pit set up and two robots that you can control with a controller. And you get to actually push around a three-D printed soccer ball. And they are more than ecstatic about that. We are also in the midst of working on a mini golf course. Um, so it has a com- every hole, we will have nine holes, um, has some type of program element to it. So you, the kids chose the theme, the farm theme. So there will be cows that move in your way. There is a water wheel that you will have to get your ball up and over. There is a gate that swings open and close, a barn door that goes open and close. And they're working on animatronics right now, since I've been gone. That's when their assignment is to make little three-D characters that move and will be a part of the golf course. So we are optimistic that we are going to have that ready in seven classes. Um, so computer science is really exciting, I have kids who want to take it a second year. So I'm just excited that they want to come to class and they want to do things, including crafting and making little diorama miniature golf holes. So with that, um, in terms of the bus cafe, this year we hired two new students, we are only losing two. And so we hired Jayla Belnap and Michael Hatfield to kind of carry us over. Next year will be a big turnover year because we will lose six of our eight or nine employees. So we will be looking at the incoming students to, um, help fill that void. We did, Mr. Green and I received an email from M S T A that they want to come into a spotlight on the bus cafe, uh, for their school and community magazine and the digital version of that. So they want to come, interview students, talk to us about the process. We've been through that several times, so we're very well-equipped. And we received others' choice in the R E C magazine for coffee shops. So that was another highlight. Bus cafe's doing well, our sales are pretty consistent every day. Um, the drive-in movies bring people in. We do have to navigate our drive-in movies with sports schedules, community activities, and our own student schedules. And weather, that one was a good, good choice some of those days. Um, in terms of F B L A middle school, I have about ten kids that are active members of it. And I took six of them to in-person contests at Mizzou. So F B L A in terms of middle school is smaller than in terms, in, different than the high school version. The high school version, we have the second-largest population of F B L A in the state of Missouri. Um, in terms of the country, the only state above us is like Wisconsin, Pennsylvania. So, um, our middle school F B L A chapters in Missouri are quite small, so we can all do state contests on one day. So we went to Mizzou and they did in-person contests through that. I had one team that placed sixth in critical thinking, which was Landon Witheroe, Nora Penn, and Reagan James. They have to go into a room, they get a case study given to them that they've never seen before, and they have to figure out what you would suggest someone do. Which for some of them is very intimidating because you don't know the people you're presenting to and you just learned this scenario twenty minutes ago. So they did that, they placed sixth and received medals. I also had a team of Logan Wright, Miles Henry, and Kenzie Mallett did a business ethics presentation. That one they got to pres- prepare ahead of time, but they also had to take a fifty-question multiple-choice test. So their score was based off of their test and their in-person component. They placed eighth and received medals. And then I had another team of Kenzie Mallett, Landon Witheroe, Logan Wright. They did a marketing mix, you have to create your own product and then go and pitch it to a group of people. And their product this time was an app for farmers or small business owners that will help you take a picture of your receipts and help you track your expenses. And you can s- make your reports to your accountant a whole lot faster than taking a shoebox of receipts. Yeah, they placed tenth, they did not medal, but they did place tenth, because they, in middle school, they only medal the top eight. With that, the top four teams go to nationals. And so anyone above you can drop and say, hey, we don't want to go or we don't want to pay the money to go. And it moves down the line. So my critical thinking team is eligible to attend nationals. And my business es- business ethics cla- group is one spot away from going to nationals. But with that, Kenzie Mallett placed individually on an F B L A concepts test and she is officially eligible to attend nationals. Okay, now, I just got back from state F B L A. We left Sunday morning at six forty-five in the morning to go to Springfield, where I took five high schoolers that did the in-person component. So they have to place in the top two or top five of their district contest. So in February, we had quite the weather and quite the experience of trying to have our district contest. So there's thirteen nineteen schools in our district and we go to Kirksville for in-person contest. And it was rescheduled three times because of weather. We had it a day that we didn't have school, that it started snowing, and we had to get it done because the state deadline was that day. So we went to Kirksville, we did that really fast in a few hours, brought home a lot of medals. With that, um, Patrick Clark placed in three events, but he can only take two to state. So he qualified in, intro to financial math, intro to marketing concepts, and securities and exchange. And so he took the intro to marketing and the in- and the securities and exchange to state. That was an objective test, hundred questions, multiple choice. So he didn't have to mistrack and still got to compete at state. Jean Clark also placed in three events, again, he'll only take two. He was part of a group with Zainrak and Elijah Reel. They placed first in the district to take sports and entertainment management to state. He also placed. He also placed individually in Agribusiness and Personal Finance. He chose to Agribusiness. Today, he placed ninth in the state and was recognized onstage, received a fancy medal. Um, Cameron Miller and Maddie Davis are the other two students I took to state today. They placed, um, for journalism, but the event they took to state was called Financial Statement Analysis. They had to review Target's financial statements in its entirety and figure out, in five financial statements, the status of Target, things that they could do well, how things have improved, how things could change, and then what their next step should be. Of forty-seven teams that were registered, the top fifteen automatically present the following day. So Sunday, they did their presentation. They moved on to the final round. They presented again Monday, and then today, we found out they placed ninth in the state. So lots of great things are happening in FBLA. We do our trivia nights, which are well-attended. We have a beef stick fundraiser all the time. I can't tell you how many meat sticks I sell out of my classroom a day. Um, or why there's just money sitting on my desk and I have a whole tab board too from kids in my class. So things are going well. I'm really proud of them. Um, so our next goal is what's bigger out there, which is nationals and finding ways to pay for our trip out there. Do you have any questions?
I have to tell instead of answering your question. I ask Becca, is there anything that you're, just so I support you?
Honestly, they, the hope that they have is to go to the next step, which, like I said, for high schoolers, someone has to drop ahead of them. The top four gets to go. But my middle schoolers are pretty set on wanting that next destination. So we have to have a conversation with them about cost.
Where is nationals?
Anaheim, California.
Yeah, it's, it's close.
I just wrote through.
Gettin' gas before you get to California.
Yes, yes. The van's really good to take. Five high schoolers and six middle schoolers, but they packed really well. They told us in our meeting yesterday evening, they said, feel free, you can apply the travel package. Um, or if you want to take your students on the twenty-hour road trip, feel free. And I don't think there were any takers from the advisors in the room, so.
Well, I mean, it's one of those opportunities that if and when that comes, I mean, let us know. Uh, I, that's what I would, I would reach out to them.
Yeah, we don't want the cost and we want it back.
Yep.
But yeah, I think it's something we don't want to keep. We want to throw it out there for them. If we can help, definitely, take one.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um, I don't have a lot of FCCLA things to talk about, so mine will be a little different. We, um, I really just kind of wanted to show you what's been going on in our classroom, um, for the most part. So interior design just got done along with both of the teachers you've already talked to presenting the big wedding project that we did. Um, if you didn't see the Facebook post, the very quick gist of it is, um, this started from one of those collaborative days that we had with Ms. Barnhill before Mrs. Sutter took over this year. Um, started with Ms. Dubrinsky and Ms. Delaney, um, talking about how they could combine math and I think flowers or maybe ag, I'm not real sure. Basically, it snowballed into, we were gonna plan a fake wedding reception, um, that entailed interior design doing the floor layout for the reception area with a set number of guests. They also created a table scape, um, and they did decorations for head table and guest tables. And then ag class, greenhouse class did the florals. They did centerpieces and bridal bouquets. Uh, my foods class and nutrition helped this year, created a menu for the wedding that they presented. Each of them created their own menu. They presented those to the bride, which was Mrs. Delaney. Um, and then she picked which items she wanted out of the menus and then we actually cooked the meal, um, and served it. And then my student, or my Nest kids, um, my flex kids created table numbers. Um, they did, I'll show you a picture later. They did name cards for everyone and they did cupcake picks, um, and a cake topper. And then Mrs. Delaney's math class, her seventh graders, took all of the recipes that we used from the meal that we cooked. They multiplied those recipes to feed two hundred and forty guests. And then they took, some big fancy word that she uses, it's a math term. Um, they took all of those recipes, basically, scaled that to the two hundred and forty. They took each individual ingredient, priced it, and how much they would need for two hundred and forty guests for each specific recipe. And then they divided that out to figure out a price per plate, um, basically by every ingredient, which is super impressive for, for seventh graders to be able to do that. Um, Mrs. Wright's class created men, not menus, invitations and RSVP cards, sorry. That was desktop publishing. Right. Um, and I think that's everyone, right? So that was, this was a big thing for us. This is what interior design's been working on for the past, well, for two weeks. Ag, at Greenhouse works on it for quite a while. They actually got to go to Rosebud's and pick out their florals this year, which I think was really great for them. Um, we presented this to Rotary last Thursday, so Mrs. Dublin got to come and eat. I hope it was delicious.
I was trying to find, I apologize for the red one. I'm a person. I was trying to find, I still had mine. I thought it was my purse, the little name card.
Yeah, I noticed a lot of people picked it up. Actually, I think Mr. Randolph was the only one that didn't take his. Other things that they are working on after we finish that big project, right now, they are, um, creating three D model houses. So I have kind of a challenge this year because I have three young men in my interior design class who do not really care much about interior design. Um, one of them wants to be an engineer, so he thought it would be a great class. And then his friends, I think, just joined in, which is great and I love it. So I wanted to give them something hands-on. So instead of doing this project that we usually do in an online platform, we're doing it in three D model this year. So they're using popsicle sticks and hot glue. So they're not going to be perfect to scale, but they're trying their best to do it to scale. So we'll see how those turn out. They will be at the, um, they'll be set up at our Eagle Arts and Innovation Night on the thirtieth, if you would like to come see those. Child development is truckin', truckin' right along. Um, they have just started taking home the infant care simulators, the fake babies. So if you see a student walking around town with a fake baby, it's for class. Um, they're loving it so far. I've only had four take them and they've not really complained too much, so that's usually good. Um, we have also continued to do our pre-K Fun Day, um, collaborative project with the preschoolers and the kindergartners. We do three-year-old, four-year-old, and kindergarten. They come down and they do an obstacle course. And what my students are doing is measuring their motor skill growth throughout the year. So we do first, second, third, and fourth quarter. And then we will create a scale after we do the fourth quarter one to see how much they have grown in those basic motor skills throughout the year. Um, we added in this last month because we were learning about intellectual development of toddlers. Um, so we added in a project that we did a few years ago, which is just this keynote. You can see Jerika doing it in that picture. They trace the letter. They listen to the letter sound and then they have to pick the three pictures that start with that letter sound. So it goes along with the CKLA curriculum, right? Let me make sure I said that right. Nutrition class, um, this was kind of a new, not really new class, but it changed the way that we did it this year. And we are actually sort of switching that again next year. We are doing nutrition and foods now. So it's kind of built, the first semester is nutrition and wellness, second semester is introduction to basic cooking. Um, this is my group this year, big things. They just got done doing a fruit bracket. So instead of March Madness bracket, we did a fruit bracket in class, where the goal is to get them to try new fruits. Unfortunately, for them, the grocery stores didn't have lots of fun fruits that I wanted. Um, but this was all the fruit that they got to try. They, they took a bracket and they guessed what was gonna win. We tried it and they voted on it. They had a lot of fun doing it. Um, it was a good way for them to learn about different varieties of the things that we eat every day, like apples. You would never believe that an apple won the entire fruit bracket. I was kind of disappointed in them and their limited palates, but they picked an apple. Um, but they had a lot of fun doing it, so we got to try some different things. That is usually my goal, is for them to be able to, A, do basic cook, have basic cooking skills, but to also increase their awareness of different foods that maybe they don't eat every day at home. I grew up in a meat potato house, so I didn't eat a lot of things when I was growing up. I would like them to do that. Um, apparel construction, this is my sewing class. I only have four students in it this year. Um, you will get to see their projects also at Arts and Innovation Night. That is, um, the vest that Dante is wearing, he made in class. Um, she made her little jacket. She's also made a beautiful purse that she's just finished recently. And Ava finished her romper. And then Kaylee was working on her purse in that picture first. We are devastated that Joeyens is closing. I'm not really sure how we're gonna handle all of that. Um, this is our foods class. We have continued to do our big Thanksgiving collaboration with the, um, first grade. I don't remember what class we do with, with first grade, where they come up and help us make homemade noodles. And then we have them come up and we all eat in my classroom together. There's usually about fifty or sixty of us and it's mass chaos, but it's wonderful fun. Um, we have also this year did, um, bread making with third grade. They were learning fractions, so they took our recipe and they doubled our recipe to learn how to double fractions, add, subtract fractions. Um, this was part of the meal that they served at the wedding. They were super proud of their cake. We've done no cake decorating. We did one day of practice to see if they could even throw together a cake and they did pretty good. And then these are the picks and the cake topper that I was talking about earlier. So they had a lot of fun with that. The school store, um, the Nest, I'm terrible at taking pictures in there for some reason, so I have like no pictures of them working. I have three flex workers that work for the Nest this year, Katie Myers, Maddie Davis, and Shaylee Zuccarini, who are all wonderful workers and I would not have survived the year without them. Um, they had big shoes to fill after Bela left me last year, so they have more than done a good job. Um, they, what the kids that are in the class this year have kind of focused on lately is advertisements. Um, started doing some flat lays. My biggest struggle with this class is they do all this wonderful work and then I have to remember to go in and post it on our Facebook page. So next year, we've already talked, they are gonna take over the Facebook page and they are gonna create an Instagram and some social media stuff for the flex kids to take over because I just don't have time to keep up with all of that. Um, that was some of the Easter goodies that they came up with to sell. They are still truckin' right along. Um, we are getting ready to load the truck back up and start working some basketball, baseball and track meets now that the weather is warm because we don't have heat in the truck and I'm not, you know. We don't want to sit outside and freeze. FCCLA, our big events this year, we did Pancakes with Parents, um, in the fall, which we have done. We also went to a new industry immersion series is what they called it. Um, so they held that at Silver Dollar City in Branson. The students got to go and listen to people who run the park about what they do in their job on a daily basis, which was really interesting for the kids. Um, they went to sessions about hospitality from the food service side of it. They went to sessions with their event director, um, basically anybody who has a management position at the park put on a session and they got to pick which ones they went to. So they really enjoyed that. I took six girls to that. We just played bingo at the nursing home not too long ago. We're getting ready to go back and plant flowers at the nursing home next month. Um, something else new that we did this year was we held a CTSO week in February. February is National CTSO Month. Um, CTSO stands for Career and Technical Student Organization. What are you giggling about?
We forgot that.
We forgot to mention that.
Um, so in each, so each, each of our clubs has a week in February. And we decided to make the fourth week our CTSO week. Um, it did not work out as we had planned because it snowed and we didn't really get to do anything. Um, but next year, hopefully it won't snow and I wish they would pick a better month for CTSO week, or month. Um, other things happening for us, obviously, we had the big classroom remodel last year. If you have not seen it yet, you're free to go down. It's a mess, mess right now, but you can go look before you leave tonight. Or you can come to Eagle Arts and Innovation Night. I'm gonna plug that as much as I can. New equipment, we didn't really get any major, uh, outside of the classroom remodel. We didn't do any major equipment purchases like an embroidery machine or any of that kind of stuff. Um, obviously, all new cooking supplies and all of that. Grant money's went to those types of things this year. Nothing really new for the Nest, um, that I can remember. Um, Innovation Night, when you come, there will be students working from each of my classes. The school store will be open, the Nest truck will be open. One of them will be out there, one will be in the classroom working on that equipment, telling people about that equipment. Next year, we are adding a international foods class. So I'm taking, this year, I have two Nest classes. I'm taking that back down to one, um, and adding in an international foods. So I don't know if that's a good thing or a bad thing. I'm today, one of the girls was like, how are you gonna do that? I don't know. How are we gonna do that? Um, but it will be really fun. So they'll do regions of the United States and then we'll start working through other countries. I'm really excited about it. I think the kids are very excited about it. I'm anxious to see what enrollment numbers look like for those, now that Mrs. Parrish has finished enrollment next. Um, and then the one thing for FCCLA that I know they want to do next year is go back to a fall leadership conference. So last year, we went to Alabama. We went to Birmingham for Fall Leadership Conference and they loved it. I told them we could not afford to go every year, so next year, we are going to try and go. But I just looked it up and it's in Anaheim, California. There's one in Anaheim and there's one in Orlando, Florida, that I think is at Disney World or Disneyland, whatever one is there. So we probably won't be able to afford either of those, but we're gonna try, so. We will see. Um, our big fundraiser is the PTO tournament concession stands and we do very well with those. So they do have a little money stashed up, so, so we'll see how we get along with that. They just kind of threw that at me this week, so we'll start saving for that. Any questions?
Other than helping fund a trip to Anaheim?
Um, I don't think so. Come to Showcase Night, see what they do on a daily basis. We're very, very proud of our kids. Um, and I know that we post things on Facebook, but I think getting to come, listen to them, talk about what they do will be great for them. Because we can talk until we're blue in the face, but it's a lot more fun to hear the kids talk about it and show what they do.
Mr. Delaney's wedding was very impressive for all of the groups.
Thank you. They, I'm not gonna say they all have fun doing it. I think the boys would have rather done something else. But my girls had a great time and the foods kids, whether or not they will admit it, had a lot of fun cooking.
Well, I'm kind of like Randy. I don't have a fancy presentation. Just come to the Innovation Night to see what the boys have been working on. It's been a busy year. Uh, we, we started out with basically working on the break room and the, and the bus shed over there, helping Mr. Turgeon out. He kind of got a little behind, so he enlisted the help of the boys to go over there and, and do some of the trim work. He'd already done the drywall and all that stuff through the summer, so the boys went over and, and hung the doors, got all the door casing, baseboard, all that up, so kind of helped him out, so. That put us a, a little bit behind on the bus wash, but I think we're still gonna be able to, to pull it off or at least be really close. As far as classes, the woods class, they, you know, did their usual stepstool chairs. They built those, you know, first semester. Now everybody's working on their heirloom projects. Brooke has got a really nice dresser that she's building and dovetail drawers. It's an oak dresser. Try to stress to them that you're gonna move out someday. Might as well start building your furniture now, you know. You'll have something to be proud of, so she took that to heart. Garrett Glass, he is building a really cool project. He's hoping to have done for the art show. He's, he's making basically a nineteen forty style radio, you know, that, you know, sets on the floor. But it's gonna have all the modern conveniences in it. It'll have a belt in Alexa. It'll have a turntable, Bluetooth capability. It's, it's gonna be a really nice project when it gets it done. So he's been staying after school, so I'm working on that. We're still working on the canoe. We've got to get that done so Mr. Turgeon can take it out to the lake before he leaves, which we're getting really close. Donovan stayed after today and we worked on getting some fiberglass put on it. So the plan is to have that done for the art show. And we'll schedule a day with Mr. Turgeon that we can take it out.
Have a pretty good fundraising event. To chip into an invisible plug in the bottom.
Uh huh. Uh huh. We just gotta keep him close because he can't swim.
True, don't get too far.
We're gonna have to tether him to shore. So, so yeah, we'll get the, get the canoe down. That's been a few years in the making. The, the boys started that two years ago, I guess, and then they were busy. Their schedule didn't allow them to, to get in there much last year, so they're getting that wrapped up this year before they graduate, so that'd be nice. Let's see. Welding class, they, you know, do their assigned welds like they do every year. We've been tested those. Then they've been working on fire pits, fish cookers. year, we've been test those, then they've been working on fire pits, fish cookers, we've got a couple of fish cookers in there now, they're getting, you know, orders done for people, so that's kept them busy. Been training a few new people on the torch mates, so we've got, you know, some freshmen, I've got quite a few freshmen in there, so we've been getting them trained on the torch mates and they can stick around, hopefully for Flex students in the future. Had a machine tool class this year, which worked out good, so that way, I had two students in machine tool, well, actually one and a second, joined second semester, but Blake, he got to help machine some of the parts for the trolley for the bus wash, so that worked out well, he wasn't just making a part for a grade, he was building a part that was, you know, served a purpose, so they always liked that better. Electrical class, I was lucky enough to get Garrett Glass back in there because he is the programmer for the bus wash, he has done wonderful with that, I think that's what he's going to school for at State Tech. So, he's been, he's been the programmer, we've got everything moved out there this fall, we got the, got the trolley built, we got the rails up, you know, for it to run on and my Flex students, I was, I've got seven of those, so that was, that was great. I've, I've had a lot of work, they've been busy, can't say enough good about those boys. I've got Mitchell Mock, Trevor Goodwin, Grant Parsons, Jace Holman, Garrett Glass, Creighton Hamlin and Donovan Dooley, so they've been, they've been a huge help. So while Garrett was, you know, programming and working on that stuff, the rest of the boys, they were putting up conduit, running communication wires and other wires to get everything, so yes, come to the Innovation Night because I think Garrett said he'll be there, hopefully I can get Donovan out there, I don't know about the rest of the boys, depends on if they're in the field or not, which I understand that, so, but I'll definitely have a couple of students out there that can explain, you know, how the bus wash works. We're in the process now of getting the measurements for all the hydraulic line to run on the trolley and get the water out there, so they've, they've been busy and we're hoping, you know, I tell them, you know, everything looks good on paper, but keep in mind it's a prototype, it's, you know, one of a kind, we don't really know until we start testing, so see how many leaks we got and what we've got wrinkles we've gotta iron out, so, you know, in a perfect world, by the end of school it'll be done for Joe so he can start washing buses this summer, but realistically, we may have a few wrinkles to work out next school year, but Donovan, Donovan will stick around, he'll be a Flex student next year, so that'll help, he'll be familiar with it to help any new ones along the way that are out there. Let's see, we did get the sheds moved earlier this fall for Mrs. Benoy, have you got those full yet? We got those, we got those moved, Donovan and Creighton, they stuck around and we got those towed out there and put in place for us and they can start filling it up with toys and for the elementary kids. As Becca had mentioned earlier, we will be building the chicken coop this fall, so that'll be exciting, get that put in place and we can find some chickens and, yeah, we're looking forward to that.
We're gonna leave room to expand upwardly as the chicken, I wouldn't say by chickens, they duplicate quickly.
We can always add on.
Go up or out?
Yeah, we can always do that. Ms. Hatchman, she had contacted me about with her three D design on the, on building the houses and everything, so maybe next year some of my wood students can manufacture, I told her, I said, do you know how many units of lumber she needs, we're gonna start cutting out two-by-fours and two-by-sixes and stuff so she doesn't have to use popsicle sticks and have something a little nicer. So that way they can have two scale, you know, two-by-fours, two-by-sixes, two-by-twelves for headers and all that stuff, so we'll try to help her out with that next year.
We're even gonna try and make mini windows with the globe boards.
There, vinyl windows, nice, so, yeah, get you some acrylic to glue in there for the glass, so, yeah, it's, project-wise, we haven't had the quantity we've had in the past, but the bus wash has taken up a huge, huge chunk of time, just, you know, I don't know. Donovan, he's been great, he'll stay any day, there's work to be done, so he's here a lot after school, working, trying to get things finished up so we can test it, so, yeah, please come out and see the Innovation Night. So I'll have students in the wash bay and then I'll probably, I'm gonna see if I can get Mitchell, he's still working on the Suzuki Samurai, he's really close to getting it primed, he's talked about coming in over Easter break and priming that, so hopefully, if it works out on his end, weather permitting, if he's not in the field, then we'll try to get in here and get that primed. I don't think that having a finished running Samurai is in the cards by the end of school because we don't have many days left, but he'll at least have it primed and then we'll see what summer brings, if it works out for him to come in and get it all wet sanded and get some color shot on it, but, yeah, been busy, busy year, any questions?
We need more space still.
Well, I, I just thought about it before I came up here, I need to talk to Becca, I would love to have a Fannic robot and I don't know if that's anything FB4 would entertain or not, but I'd love to, you know, it won't work for next year, but maybe the following year, I'd love to have like a second, a second level of electronics class where we can focus more on the industrial side of it with PLCs and incorporate the robot with it, so.
I have a good answer for your question of what you can do, you can hire another one of each of us.
So, but yeah, yeah, like a Fannic teachmate, I would love to have that to have really much of a class. It's, it's a, it's a small version of a Fannic robot, it can have, you know, like six axes on it and with the students then they could program it to do different tasks, but also like an industry, that robot could feed, say, a computerized lathe, so that, that lathe tells the robot, hey, I'm done, my door's open, reach in, get this part, swap it out, put another one in, so.
Like an auto plant?
Yes, yes.
Just, they have small ones, they're called like teachmaids, they have all kinds of different sizes, but they, they sell a package deal of teachmaid where you can buy different end effectors, so you can make it a pick, you can make it weld, you can make it adhesive, it gets more coincided with like the three printer. They're, they're not, I mean, they're not cheap, but they're not, they're not crazy.
Thirty grand.
Yeah, you could get over fifty for sure.
Mr. Green, could you make one?
Give it enough time. But, yeah, that, that would be something that, you know, I've dreamt about for a few years, I'd love to have that and offer a second level in electrical class that we can just kinda focus on that stuff, but, yeah, I'll do time, so I may have, I may have Becca throw that on the FB4, they'll either say yay or nay, but.
We gave you a good fundraiser, that's a good fundraising idea earlier.
Yeah.
I would just like to say, I had a young lady come in to our office from another school and this was last fall and she expressed the desire or the wish that she would have had the opportunity to come to our school for some of the things that you guys are offering and it is your dedication and your, your passion that is, you're showing the students and the students are telling the other students and these, these kids in the other schools are hearing this and they're wishing that they were here, so it's impressive, I mean, you're impressing, you know, not only the parents, but you're impressing the other kids because when it, when another student comes in and they don't know who we are and we're hearing it, that's really, that's a lot, so.
Excellent job.
I think it sticks out to me and I know all kids, but Garrett Glass, he doesn't say a word, he puts his head, he doesn't talk, but when he's able to talk about his chum bucket and all of his electronics out there, he, Karen, yes, he lights up and it's his, it's amazing to, it is really cool.
Yeah, for somebody, because we've got, Mr. Turgeon has got, and I'm, I'm not gonna get this late, but the, maybe Mr. Van Elden could help, the lady, the head lady for DSE at the state of Missouri. She will be up here May fifteenth to check out kind of what we've got going on here in the, in the career and the technical education part, so hopefully we can bend her ear and make an impression that, you know, she's, I think, from what I've talked to Mr. Turgeon, she is, you know, seeing the need for skilled labor and the importance and the lack thereof, so hopefully, you know, we can get, because, because my department gets no funding, I'm not eligible for FB4s, the state of Missouri doesn't even recognize industrial tech, so thanks to you guys, board members and the admin for supporting what I do out there because the state of Missouri doesn't. So hopefully when we get her up here, we can make a good impression on her and maybe that'll change, I don't know, but she'll be here May fifteenth, so, kind of back to what Mr. Harper was saying, I mentioned it to Garrett, hey, would you like to present to this lady, oh yeah, he said, I'll be here. But, but to see him out and about, you know, he never says a word to anybody, very quiet, you give him a task, he'll put his head down and that's what he's doing, you don't have to worry about him, but he will talk when it comes to that stuff.
Exposure lights that passion up, just the different pieces of what you guys all get in front of him and something's gonna click and that's, that's great.
Well, I wanted to go to everybody's classroom and listen to you guys, I mean, I, maybe you wanna be part of it.
You can come hang out with us any day.
I would love to.
You can just let us know when you're coming.
I'll let you know when we're gonna be out in the greenhouse and you can get some.
I like dirt.
So yes, thank you everybody.
More policies and regulations.
Yes.
You guys don't wanna go page one of these policies?
Mr. Turgeon was hard at work over the last month, even when he was on vacation in Florida, making sure that he was gonna meet his goal of getting through, I think, all but the seven thousands. More policy this go-around, he didn't really have any changes that he found, he just updated them to match the most current policy, so no major changes in anything that he put or in those emails, any questions about the updates?
I'll obtain a motion for approval of the policies.
Second?
On favor? Remove that we adjourned the regular session, do a closed session for purposes, purpose of considering the students under section sixteen dot zero two one, subsection six and fourteen RSO, personnel under section sixteen dot zero two one, subsections three and thirteen RSO.
Mr. Dos?
Yes.
And Mrs. View?
Yes.
Mrs. Devlin?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Dr. Strange?
Yes.